Okay, so we'll call this meeting to order for the Planning Commission, Lethrow Village, for Tuesday, May 18th, 2021. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, we'll move on to roll call.
Roll call. Chair Pietrowski.
Here from my home in Lethrow Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hammond.
Present attending from Lethrow Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
Secretary Thompson.
Here from Ann Arbor, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Board Member Fobbs.
Present from Lethrow Village, Michigan, Oakland County.
Board Member Cantor.
Here, Lethrow Village, Oakland County, Michigan.
And Board Member Stansberry. That is at them. Mr. Chair, do you have a quorum?
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilperson Stansberry.
Second.
Those in favor. Roll call.
Roll call. Vice Chair Hammond.
Yes.
Secretary Thompson.
Yes.
Board Member Fobbs.
Yes.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
And Chair Pietrowski.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, approval of the agenda. There are no questions, concerns regarding the agenda. We'll entertain a motion to approve as written.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda and approve it as written.
Second.
Those in favor, roll call.
Roll call. Board Member Fobbs.
Yes.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Pietrowski.
Yes.
And Board Member Thompson.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the agenda.
Okay, so we'll move on to approval of the meeting minutes for our, for the meeting of April 20th, 2021. If there are no questions or concerns regarding the content of the meeting minutes, we'll entertain a motion to approve as written or or as amended based on what any of the commission brings forward.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from April 20th, 2021.
Oh, I actually have a question about the minutes.
Okay, Hannah, go ahead.
And I'm trying to find the page number, but when we were voting, Commissioner Stansberry voted no on one of the motions, but I can't find it.
Oh, okay, you're right. I'll go back and correct it. You know, I thought about that driving home today. I'm like, wait, is that new? So yeah, I'll go back and I'll correct it because I'll have to go back through my notes and I don't have them in front of me. But thank you. I'll correct it.
Modifying my motion with, as corrected.
Second.
Those in favor, roll call.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Pietrowski.
Yes.
Board Member Thompson.
Yes.
And Board Member Fobbs.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the minutes from April 20th, 2021 with the correction.
Okay. So we'll move on to public comment. At this time, we'll entertain comments from the public on any item that is not associated with the agenda this evening. Okay, I'm not hearing any, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is new business. And starting off with the site plan review for US Rehab, 2607-079 Southfield Road.
Just before I have Eric begin going into his review, Jefferson, is that, Josh, is that your architect?
Right, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I'm unmuting the right person. So, hi, Josh. So once, I'll let Eric go through his presentation and then we'll have the applicant and his architect get anything and then you guys can discuss. Do I need to share the screen?
Yes, I was just gonna ask if I could share the screen.
Voila, my friend, you have the power.
Awesome. Bear with me, everyone. This is my first go at it, so I'm not seeing the ability. Oh, there we go.
Oh, double trouble. Holy cow.
Yeah.
Can you see my screen?
Yeah.
Okay. So I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Eric Peach with Giffords Webster. I'm filling in for Jill Bane this evening. And so the first item that we're gonna go over is the US Rehab application for, which is a change of use at the facility located at 26079 Southfield Road. And I apologize, I have the wrong map in here, but this is south of 696, just north of the city's boundary. And so just the overview, this is about a point four six acre site. It's a one-story mixed-use facility of about 6,000 square feet, of which the proposed change of use will be occupying a tenant space of 2,508 square feet. And again, the primary, or the previous use was a dry cleaner, so that was a personal service, and they're changing it to a medical office, more specifically, a rehabilitation facility. As you can see, the area adjacent to the subject site is residential. It's an existing site of which it takes access from an alley, also from the front side, but there's no access from Southfield Road. Everything is existing in terms of the parking. The proposed facility would require 15 parking spaces and the overall, once you account for all tenant spaces, would require 37. And that is, in fact, what they are providing. So as we went through this application to determine whether or not there's compliance of the parking requirement, there's some questions in regards to whether or not they have the ability to take proper access from the alley in this location. And so at this point in time, we're hoping to get more information in terms of how that would function, because we just want to make sure that they have the appropriate amount of parking if this use was to be permitted. And this is the site here. It's the portion that's the northern end of the existing site where the dry cleaners sign is located. So that concludes my, my presentation.
Okay, so I'm gonna just speak for just a minute here, and I think the, the point of clarification has to do with the, with the actual space on the site and whether the, the parking is indeed encroaching into the alleyway. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And if there's proper access that can be given to those spaces with the widths of the alley, and I understand that the widths aren't necessarily a concern, but just if, by permitting this use, that it, those spaces in the back can be properly used.
Okay.
Jefferson or Josh, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
Yeah, only that there's existing parking in the back. It's, I'm sure I made some feedback. I'm gonna take up speed here. I'm sorry, is that better? I've just taken off speaker.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so sorry. Okay, so the back of the building already has parking. There's obviously spaces that have been painted along the back, so I see that more being for employees typically. And our business being rehab, we do more than 70 to 80% water. So pretty much we have transport vehicles who drop people off during the day. It's not really, you need, you know, a car space per client. So we don't be probably even need 15 spots, but I suppose it's good to have enough parking based on the 150 feet per, I think it's one spot, 150 feet of, of space. The site, the site is an optometrist. He's been there 35 years. Typically, he has one or two clients in at a time, so he doesn't really need a whole bunch of space himself. But yeah, if you see that from the, from the back, those, those parking spots are pretty well designated between the alley and the space right behind the building.
And then on top of that, with everything being on a schedule, it's not really a walk-in clinic. At most, I know he had written a letter. I think you guys have received. He said he'd only have five clients present at any one time, and that would be the absolute max, so that wouldn't be a consistent thing. With it being scheduled, it'd be more of a rotation of the parking spaces that he would need throughout the day.
Okay, so I, I don't think at this point, there's been a question, at least not in, of, of, of great concern regarding the quantity of spaces itself, although the report from Giffords Webster did make reference to a degree of uncertainty relative to the parking rate or confirmation of the parking, the rate related to the other tenant spaces, just to validate that the total is accurate. And, and I think the intent is to get that information so that we have that on record as being correct. And then the other aspect of this was related to the 20-foot alleyway and then 20 feet of space based on the requirement for the parking stalls themselves. And if they are indeed encroaching upon the alley, then there would be some requirement for the city and from zoning, I believe, to just provide official authorization that that is a correct, that, that, that they would accept that, that encroachment. I know we've had this issue come up on some previous, with some previous sites, and there was consideration being given. I don't immediately remember the outcome on those cases from, from council, if I'm not misspeaking here.
Yeah, I think a difficult question for Susie or Scott is, as my recollection is that the alley is right away, that the city council has to authorize the use of the alley for parking purposes, and that there's usually some sort of a leasing agreement, because the alley is city property.
Correct. That would be, so if they're encroaching into the alley and they need to use it for parking, they would need to obtain an encroachment license from the city. And I think that, and I, of course, I don't have the large set of plans on me. Josh, do you have the, do you have the dimension information for the alley and those parking stalls in the rear?
As far as the depth from the end of the parking stalls to the brick wall?
Yes, and the dimensions of the, of the stalls themselves?
The stalls themselves are, looks like 18 by nine, I think. Let me double check. Yeah, 18 by nine.
Okay. And then what is, do you have that dimension then from of the alley?
From the end of the parking spot to the alley?
Yeah.
It's 19 feet.
So I think, and it's in the letter from, from Jill in Giffords, I, you know, the recommendation is just to get that, you know, there's no issue with the use itself, but to get, to have the applicant do a survey to, to just confirm those widths to ensure that they're not encroaching into the alley, and then if need be, to obtain that encroachment license, but that could all be done administratively if you choose, or you can.
So. Right, and I, the, the key thing here is making sure that we have the legal documentation that, that backs up the decision-making and, and supports the zoning requirements for the facility. So since the documentation provided shows the basic intent, but doesn't have the complete criteria as was stipulated by our city planners, we're looking for that information to be provided. Now, that said, the commission here can, you know, assuming a, a, I guess, a positive outcome or a submission of that documentation, it, it's looking favorable. I mean, there's a, there's a path to, for, for us to, to accept, accept the change of use. It's just a requirement of getting this documentation in place for us to do so.
Okay, so you just need a site plan that has more accurate dimensions? Is that what you're looking for?
More accurate information. The property lines, because they were, they were absent, so that it's, it's spelled out in, in the list, which is partially filled out, and there are some items on it that are marked off as either not applicable or not provided, and and those items should really be included, unless it's truly a not applicable, you know, obviously, there's a residential section, not applicable. We understand that. But if there's information pertinent to the plan itself, and specifically speaking to the, to the dimensional fit of the parking as it's currently laid out, as I said, it's not going to likely change the status, the building, the parking, the alley are all existing conditions. So what we're looking at is just recognizing if there is a non-compliant existing condition, and then take the proper status with the city so that that condition continues to, or exists with, with, with the basis for approval identified.
Okay, so basically, we just need to get, get the site plan more accurate with the dimensions, and then just apply for an encroachment license that we can do administratively at that point.
Correct, if, if the encroachment license is, is required there with, with the work out of that final plan.
Okay, so my next question is then, with the, the end, with all the work being done on the interior, is it possible to move forward with that work while we get the site plan to see if we need to get the encroachment license, or is that something we have to wait on doing any work on the interior to get the site plan first to apply for the encroachment license with the site not being able to change? Like, we can't move the brick wall in the back. The parking's not gonna change. We can't make the alley wider. Is that gonna hold us up on doing anything with the interior build while we obtain that site plan?
Well, I would say, I guess we would hold off on doing the interior work, but I guess it really comes down to how quickly, you know, you can turn around those, those changes to show that dimensional information. It, like the review letter says, I mean, a, a survey would be, a sealed survey would likely be sufficient, if that's okay with the planning commission, to confirm those dimensions. So as quickly as that information can be submitted, administered, and reviewed administratively, you know, we can get you moving on the building, the interior building work as soon as possible.
And I think it's a, it would be appropriate to, if, if the planning commission decided this evening to move this forward with those conditional approvals, so that way they don't have to come back to the planning commission next month to, to revisit that, because as indicated, most of these things can be administratively determined if they're compliant or not.
And I agree with that. So with that said, if there aren't any other questions regarding, Jason, it looked like you're ready to say something.
I'm ready to make a motion to approve the site plan for 079 Southfield Road with the condition that a signed sealed survey is delivered to the city for review and that the administrative review of that survey supports the, the approval considering zoning ordinances.
Okay, do we have a second?
There was a second thing on mute.
Second.
Okay, those in favor. Roll call.
Roll call. Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Pietrowski.
Yes.
Board Member Thompson.
Yes.
Board Member Fobbs.
Yes.
And Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you, Vet.
All right, thank you.
Okay, with that, we will move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the public hearing, special land use for Discount Tire, 2700 Southfield Road.
Right, I, so I'll just give you a quick overview for the public hearing, and then when we get to item C, we'll have Eric take it away again, and the applicant representatives of the applicant are, are here as well. So this is for 27,000 Southfield Road, which is the Discount Tire that's been existing. We've talked to them a few times over the last few months. They were appeared before city council last month to seek a Class B non-conforming use zoning determination to allow them to expand. They are proposing to build a small building addition for the storage of dead tires as well as expand the parking lot in the adjacent residential lot for increased employee parking and just overall improve the general circulation of the site. So it does look like, I recognize at least one residence name in our attendee list, so we do have some individuals here that are interested in speaking, so I'll just remind you to raise your hand if you wanna, if you'd like to comment. And you can open it when you want, Mark.
Okay, well, let's, let's open the, unless there's any discussion that the Planning Commission wants to have prior to it, we'll open the public hearing for special land use for Discount Tire.
I know, I see, oh.
I see a hand raised. It looks like a hand raised.
Yes. You are unmuted.
Who's unmuted?
Beverly.
Looks like Ms. Banks.
Ms. Banks.
Oh, I am, there you are. There you are, Ms. Banks.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
I'm Beverly Banks. My husband Ross Banks, we're both here. We were just wondering, well, I was wondering, how far is the parking lot going to extend back into our neighborhood? We have a problem with traffic coming down our street, which you're probably aware of that, just regular traffic, where people will try to take a shortcut over to the service drive or Southfield. I don't know where, they're going in every direction. But I'm wondering if it's gonna increase greatly if they increase the size of that parking lot? Like, which way is it going to flow onto the service drive? How is the entrance and exit to this parking lot going to work? That's all.
Okay. Maybe it'd be helpful to get the plan up on the screen.
Yes, I can do that. Let me see here.
No, we're not.
Okay, can everybody see the plan?
Yep.
Can you make it a presentation view, Eric?
Yes, thank you.
Please.
Sorry.
We all have old eyes.
So on the left-hand side, you see what's existing, and there already is a small portion that is paved. This is the parcel that's in question here. That's the single-family lot, or that's zone R1. And then over here on what's proposed, you can see that they're essentially just filling in the dimensions of the lot. And then over here, you can see there was the dumpster enclosure that's now being relocated to the southeast corner. And that, the attempt to do that is to have better circulation within this public alley here. So to answer the question, the extent of the new parking is just going to be within that, the dimensions of that lot.
And, and Eric, to speak to the, the alleyway itself and the entrance, the entrance itself is not, does not appear to have changed in dimension. It looks like parking has been removed from the, let's say, the, the west side of the alley in favor of providing that space as the loading zone, which is already existing there, but as was pointed out by the city engineers, they have to make sure that that loading zone technically is in the portion that's contained by the property line, which is, yeah, which is.
Right, and so that's the, the other portion of the property is here, abutting Southfield Road and 11 Mile. And so the purpose of extending the loading zone south to the edge of the building is because that's where the addition is going to occur. And with that addition, that's where the, I believe it's for dead tire storage. And so the loading and unloading of that material will be in this location, so that'll clear these parking spaces from this location and relocate them to the east side of the alley.
So I don't know if that answers any, any questions, I guess, with the, with regard to the question of traffic flow on, on Sunnybrook Avenue. If this parking would contribute to any additional traffic flow, I'm not certain it necessarily would. I don't know if I can say that with, with any authority, unless it somehow increases the ability to, to conduct more business, but the building itself isn't changing in size, so it doesn't seem to me that, that, that is going to necessarily, I mean, seems to me that that would be the controlling factor here. But maybe the, if there's a representation from the ownership in the conducting of the business, they could comment on that more, more effectively in terms of, of how they, how they foresee the, the added parking affecting their operation and, and what they do.
This is Joe Esterbake with ENG Engineering and Surveying. The total parking spaces on the site is gonna remain the same. There's 39 in existing conditions and 39 in proposed conditions. And also the parking spaces in this area and the existing conditions where the loading zone will go, and, and the new location will all be employee parking. So really, it shouldn't have any impact on traffic down Sunnybrook. It should be the same.
So currently, there's three points of access to Discount Tire. You, you have access off of the service drive, 696 westbound service drive. You have access off of Southfield Road would be northbound, and then there's a height, as my wife pointed out, a high volume of traffic that uses Sunnybrook to enter into the Discount Tire parking lot. So we're, we're already dealing with a high volume of traffic, especially during commute time and, and business hours, so we're trying to assess if we're gonna have even more traffic coming down our street, or is there gonna be any type of directional, you know, signage? Right, something that directs people to use these other two points of address?
We already have enough through traffic, so that's helped a bit. I mean, it was literally. We already have enough through traffic, so that's helped a bit. I mean, it was literally the police department came and put up. We call them speed monitors and found that people are just zipping down the street at extremely high speeds.
In, in this coming from, would you, would you say it's coming more from Southfield Road or versus Lathrop Boulevard or?
Southfield Road predominant.
Yeah.
Right. So, but we see the traffic for, excuse me, we see the traffic for people trying to enter discount tire. If they cannot make that turn off of Southfield Road to get into the discount tire parking lot. They're already conditioned to go around, which would mean making a right turn on Sunnybrook. And then trying to enter into the discount tire parking lot from the rear. So more, more parking in our minds equals more traffic.
Yes, but I think that the, the applicant just said the parking number of parking spaces is exactly the same. They're just moving.
It'll be thirty-nine in, in existing and for the proposed conditions. It'll be the same in both and there's no additional services or no large addition to the building. So, you know, the total volume coming to the building should not change.
Okay, so I guess I'm a little, please clarify when it says discount tire parking expansion. What's expanding? If parking's not expanding, what is expanding?
The paved surface is expanding because essentially what they, what they've stated is they're going back to the, that floor plan. Let's bring it back or that site plan, bring it back up. So previously, they had parking on the other side of the alley. It's over, yeah, they had it on both sides. They had part, part of that, part of the area is, is occupied right adjacent to the alley, to the east. And then there are additional spaces that are to the west side of the alley, just north of the building. And what they're effectively doing is moving those spaces over to the east side of the alley. But in addition to that, they're pushing them further onto the, onto that lot. So that they are not relying on the alley itself for the, the zone. Into which they, they pull into those parking spaces. So at least that's the way I'm interpreting the plan. Essentially, they've created a lane adjacent to the alley for access to the parking spaces. So. Now. So, so from, I guess, just addressing that one issue at a time, it's not a net, a net change in parking. It's just a relocating of the parking so that they can build a permanent structure. Part of the addition to the, to the building itself to accommodate storage, internal storage for their dead. Dead tires until they, until they are removed from the site.
Well, that would be good because no one wants to see the tires piled up on the corner. That looks pretty chatty.
We see that. We see that.
Yeah, so now I think there's some other aspects of the plan that might merit some, some discussion here. I was reading the, I, I didn't see commentary on this, but I, I see the notation of the utility lines. And the location of the pole that is pretty much if you drew a line between those two blue arrows. Is like smack in the lane, which looks like it, it, it has an impact or potential interference with some of those parking spaces. So I, I wanted to see if the, if the presenter on this could, could. Could provide some background on what's anticipated regarding that utility pole. And the adjoining guy wires, which obviously are also currently obstructing or would obstruct. Maneuvering around that, that element and into those parking spaces.
Hey, Mark, is that something we should discuss when, when planning commission discusses the project as opposed to during the public hearing?
Yes, that's a good point. We kind of got into a casual discussion here and I think it's, I think it's worked for purposes of, of. The. Resident there expressing themselves, but we can carry on that discussion after the public hearing.
And I just put a little message in if anybody, if there's anyone else that wants to make a comment, to feel free to. Raise a hand or put something in the, the Q and A or the chat function is fine too.
And we appreciate your feedback and your regarding, regarding the proposed change. And it's certainly going to be taken into consideration in our discussion here.
Ms. Banks, you're still, did you have another comment?
Yeah, one more question for me. So is the information, especially the, the over, overhead view of this. Proposal available online right now?
I, yes, I will, you know what, I'll put a, I'll put a link to the agenda packet in the chat function so you can see that it's. Right, can you wait one second?
And then final question, are we decidedly making our decision right now today? Is this live or is there any time to? You know, digest this information and come back with any more questions or comments?
Our final special land use approval will be done by the city council. So if, if, if planning commission chooses to move forward on this tonight. It would presumably it would be with a recommendation to city council and. Their approval or disapproval, I guess, of the site plan.
Very good. That would, that would most likely take place on June twenty-first, correct, Sizzi?
That is correct. And you'll have another, so there'll be another opportunity for comment at that point.
Okay, thank you. I lower my hand.
Yep, I got you covered.
And, and if, if nothing else in the, I'll just make this closing statement and we'll close the public hearing if there are no additional comments. And that's that, the issue of traffic on the street, dependent or independent on the business in question. Is, is certainly good information to have and obviously you've been in contact with the city and the police department before regarding that. And independent of this, whether there's an opportunity for. Addressing it through further signage or patrol, I guess that's something else you can, that the city can discuss.
Mark, we actually, we actually put up two very large no, no cut-through traffic signs at the, at the entranceway and we, we had the laser. The laser sign out there for a while to try to slow, slow traffic as well.
Yes, okay. All right. There are no other questions from the public. Regarding this, we'll close the public hearing. And move on to. Planning Commission discussion.
So.
Special land use approval.
I had a question about the fact that this, this area that currently has some parking and the rest of it's grass is zone R one. So.
Well, do you want Eric to go? Sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. Do you want Eric to go through his presentation real quick and maybe that'll?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. All right, there we go. Okay, so everyone see the screen?
Yeah.
Please, there you go.
There we go. Okay, so again, this is twenty seven thousand Southfield Road, which is the discount tire location. This map is correct this time. This is the northeast corner of the six ninety-six feeder road. Which is also eleven mile service drive, excuse me, and Southfield Road on the west side of the property. And as you can see, the property consists of five different tracks. Two of which are within the mixed, I'm sorry, the commercial vehicular in dark red. And then two within the mixed use along the service drive. And then, of course, the one that we've been discussing, the parcel that's within our one residential district. That's going to be proposed to be the expansion of the surface parking. So the facility as it exists is approximately nine thousand seven hundred square feet automotive repair facility, that being the discount tire. And what they're proposing again is just for that surface parking expansion and for a small addition. On the north side of the building for tire storage. So this is the site looking from Sunnybrook, the residential street that was being discussed. There will be relocation of the utility line, so there'll need to be coordination with that. But this view is looking at the parcel of land where the proposed surface parking will be constructed. And then the, the adjacent property to the left is a single-family home. And as you can see, there's some landscape buffering existing there as well as some fence within the, the backside of this photo. And if you see the American flag just below that and to the left is the existing dumpster enclosure. And once we get to the site plan, you'll see that that's gonna be relocated further back and towards the, the service drive. This is a view from the service drive looking north. As you can see, there's a curb cut in this location where vehicles traveling westbound can enter the site. But there is a little bit of confusion as to where to go. Once you enter the site, you can see that there's arrows on the asphalt. Directing vehicles to the back of the property along the public alley. But it's understood that you can also turn left into customer parking to come in and out of the facility on the left-hand side there. So there's a little bit of confusion in terms of circulation still. It's my understanding that there is a tire check queue, a lineup where you see that white car entering the building. There's vehicles behind it. That would seem to indicate that that's a one-way directional flow, which traffic would come in off of Sunnybrook. So the question would be, is vehicles entering off of the service drive, how would they proceed to the rear of that queued line? If they weren't to enter it from Sunnybrook? Again, this is the existing site plan or the existing site and the proposed site plan. So on the left here, you can see that there's a small portion that's currently paved and that they're gonna be expanding it to. Encompass the entire single-family lot. This is the location of the dumpster enclosure to the lower right. The addition to the building is on the north side and that's where they're gonna have the proposed loading area. Adjacent to the alley, but the intent is to keep the alleys free and clear of any obstructions. And then to point out the queue line for the, for the tire check, the air check of the tires. That's located in the alley here, well. It's located within the alley, but there is some concern over parking lot obstruction. So we may ask the applicant to have a discussion regarding that. This is the landscape plan showing that the proposed improvements for the surface parking lot will be adequately screened. Or buffered from the adjacent single-family home. Going through the calculations, it does appear as though that they have provided the adequate number of trees and shrubs. As well as a six-foot tall buffering wall. However, one of the things that I noticed during my review was that the southern portion of the single-family lot, the adjacent lot. Does not have a wall that separates the commercial use from the single-family residential use. So the commission may consider to extend that southern portion of the wall to the east. In order to make a connection to an existing wall that separates the single-family from the commercial use. And you can see that on the picture in the right, where there's an existing white wall with a trash can next to it. That's the, the gap there that would, would remain if it wasn't closed in off of the new, newly proposed wall. Coming from the north off of, off the east side of the property. So, and then the picture on the left shows the existing separation between the commercial and the, the residential use. So to recap, these are the bullet points of what the project entails. They're adding the surface parking on the R one lot, which is a nonconforming use. They're relocating the dumpster enclosure to improve access to the alley. And then adding a rear storage room for the dead tires, replacing a temporary container that exists on the site. Many of which, based on my site visit, there was a lot of tires that were being stored on the outside of the building as well. And then, of course, the addition of the six-foot buffer wall and landscaping between the, the two uses. That concludes my presentation.
Hey, I, I, I guess I have a question regarding the location of the buffer wall. And the tie-in of the buffer wall relative to existing landscaping that's there. Existing, related to existing fencing that's there. I see what looks like a chain link fence in the, the portion where it's not on the site plan currently, but it had been note, but as you have noted, Eric. So it looks like we have almost like a triplicate of fences potentially there. And, and that's just an observation at this point on my part, although obviously between those walls, there's some challenging. Maintenance issues is to be addressed, but I guess the bigger issue that I would say is with, with the construction of that wall. Which is what is required for the separation between the, the, the districts. Is the impact that it might have to the, the existing landscaping in the existing fencing, depending on their locations. And whether or not that's gonna be just a shock to the resident. If, if something, I mean, if, is there something that's gonna be, have an impact there that, that. Is not immediately evident from the, the scale of the plan as we've looked at it.
Mark, you mean like, if there is like, that creates the opportunity for something to grow in between the retaining wall that's proposed. And the existing decorative wall on the residential property or something like that?
The, the, in between, obviously, the, the maintenance is, is going to be an, an issue that, that has to be dealt with in some regard. But there's also, I, I, what immediately came to mind is maybe position of where fences and, and. Do we end up with a situation where something that's existing is in the way of where something needs to be constructed, like the new wall? The new wall should be at what offset from, from the property line. And, but I think that's what creates this instance of, of the multiple fences and walls and, and. And I guess the, the access to that area, because as I understand it, the property line is, is. Somewhere in between those two and that access needs to be, they need to be able to get access to it. The, the owner of the property to maintain that area. So more, more or less a statement, I don't know if it's a concern at this point, you know, it's provided so long as there's a means of maintaining area between fences.
Mark, the, the resident next door is, he's on the calls, Mr. Bachelor. You could certainly pose that question to him. I mean, I think now would be, now would be the appropriate time, you know, as you're reviewing the site plan to make a decision as to what you wanna do. With. Where, what you would like to see, I guess, with dealing with the fences. I know we've had a similar issue with a different project and maintenance of that in between. Has come up as a topic, so. Mr. Bachelor.
Actually on our agenda tonight later, I believe.
Right, which is what, what, which is what brought my attention to it because that was, there was some specific language in there about, about maintaining that access. So that that area can be maintained.
Yeah, so, Mr. Bachelor is, you're, you're unmuted, Mr. Bachelor. If you would like to comment on what Chair Petrowski has talked about regarding the fencing. Mr. Bachelor, did you have any comment about the, the, the screen wall and, and the fencing on your property? The the screen wall and and the fencing on your property?
Wonder if they stepped away. Double muted.
Mr. Bachelor, you are unmuted, you're free to talk. Mr. Bachelor, did you have a comment?
I guess I'm going to propose we continue on with our discussion and we can check in one more time. And it's, I'm not so much commenting on, I'm not commenting on the status or the condition or whether, you know. Anything that's in place is appropriate, you know, at that line right now, it's more of understanding the impact and making sure that. Everyone on both sides of the fence understands what's happening. Or what's being proposed.
All right, Eric, I'll let you continue and Mr. Bachelor would like to wait and we'll give him another chance in a minute.
Well, that was essentially the end of my presentation, so.
So the I want to, I'll add, ask another question, and and this had already come before the zoning. Board, correct, regarding the.
Yes, so they, it was the last month's. Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. They came and requesting a class B nonconforming use classification. Which allows that the the existing parking on the residential lot is a nonconformity. And so obtaining that class B nonconforming use designation allows them. To expand the parking lot, essentially.
It's 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 doing the due diligence for the kind of preapproval for what they propose to do on the subject site. The green, the green site current that currently. For the site that has. Correct.
Aren't there are one district that's grass?
Yes, that's what I'm referring to, the the area that's grass right now. Yes, okay.
All right, and we also have. We have the applicant representatives from the applicant here with us. We've got Joe and Ryan and we have Terry on as well. Any of you gentlemen like to add anything?
I think there was the question regarding the explanation of the flow through the site is in terms of operations. And that Eric made reference to. The direction off of eleven mile road and the flow to get into that that pressure check queue.
Yes, the the logical location to access the site for the air check queue would be through Sunnybrook on the north side. You know, I'm looking at the site plan here, and I think that they, you probably could enter off of. From the south as well and make your way up to the north and turn around, but really the logical location that. Pass through the site would be through Sunnybrook and to enter the air check queue. And I don't know if Ryan or Terry, if either of you want to add anything to that about the circulation through the site.
This is Terry. That that is the most logical, you know, way to go. We tried with the arrows before. And it caused too much congestion down on eleven mile and those will go away when the lot is resealed. But as explained, coming in off the sunny brook, we've tried to keep that line. You know, flowing and moving into the building and exiting out onto Southfield Road. To alleviate, you know, traffic problems.
I can say I was part of the commission previously when when. Discount Tire came to us last time with regard to. Creating that kind of drive through entrance for that south part of the building. And I believe the the they were trying to create the circulation. If I'm not mistaken, to to be able to maneuver to get in and through there in in that fashion. Or at least to make it easier for that to occur.
And we've worked with a couple of different programs or methods. The sheer volume of people that want to get their air checks on a daily basis is very high. I did as a service, but I know it creates a lot of traffic.
Can can you speak to the the concern expressed by our city planners with regard to that queue occurring through the parking? Essentially, the parking drive lane. And how flow is anticipated if cars are queued right there. It's almost like what I would almost call the median, if you will, between a drive lane, maybe to the east. And then the alleyway to the west.
Well, we're proposing that to try to alleviate any blockage on the alleyway as you have asked us. Time, you know, before to. I mean, this is the only way we can come up with. You know, planning wise to try to leave the alleyway open, so there is no blockage there.
And didn't you say that that was going to be mostly employee parking anyway? So that would limit the in and out in those spaces.
Yeah, the cars that'll be parked in that area as in the as they are right now, they park. On the west side of the alley and on the east side, south of the dumpster housing. So by moving it all to one spot, that's where all the employees will park. So we're not adding, you know, like we said earlier, there is no parking being added, so. There won't be any traffic in and out other than when the guys go to lunch.
And Eric, I think I have a question for you regarding, maybe you can. Unless you have representation from your engineers regarding. Handling the water runoff. It looks like they have a plan there to essentially drain it to a a maybe a swale area between the wall and the parking lot itself. And to interconnect it up to. Similar drainage on the existing part of the site, is there?
They will have to be going through a full engineer engineering review that was part of our. Preliminary discussions or their pre application discussions with. Scott Ringler and and Jill, so they will have to go through through that review process and we did discuss. Having a swell between the parking and that and that wall, the screen wall. And as you can see in Scott's letter, they did talk, did mention they're going to need a stormwater detention, so. That'll be in the next phase.
In the engineering phase of making, make coming up with an acceptable final solution for it, so. Yeah, and that's not at all a judgment on my part. I I couldn't tell you if it's working or not working right now. But it looks like there's at least a plan intent that's been demonstrated.
Mr. Bachelor has his hand up. Mr. Bachelor, you. If you have a comment.
Will entertain it at this time. Hopefully, it's not technical difficulties.
I can try and type the. Comments in the chat.
Look at the chats here.
Yeah, you sent him a message, didn't you, Jason?
I did send Mr. Bachelor.
Okay. Well, are there any other questions or concerns from the commission at this point or? Are we ready to?
I guess I'm a little confused, so the the. All five parcels that are listed here are owned by this entire under the one address, right, twenty seven hundred Southfield Road. They're just zoned differently. And if we submit this for approval by. Recommend this for approval by the city council, we're essentially recommending that. The R one district piece be authorized for use in a nonconforming way.
Yes, and and like I said, they already got that designation or the approval for that designation.
Got it. The I noticed that there are references in the drawing to catch basin filter with a filter bag, so. Just calling attention to that because it means that that'll need to be part of daily maintenance by the staff there to. Deal with cleaning out that catch basin filter bag, make sure it doesn't get blocked and cause backlogs.
Sorry, this is Joe, that that's just a temporary condition during construction.
Oh, okay. Very good.
That's the intent to prevent runoff from the construction process from contaminating existing. Utilities, is that a correct statement, Joe?
Yep, correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mark, I have a few things. So most of these are fairly minor, but as we've done in the past, I'd like to enter them as as conditions for the special land use. First, you know, I'm a regular customer of Discount Tire, so I'm glad you guys are here. I live across the street from you guys. The closest house to you from. On the other side of Southfield, on the on the west side of Southfield. And I I I walk by your property four to five times a day and one one of the things that. Let's just say I've noticed has not been great over the years is is the maintenance of of garbage both on the lot and especially in the right of way. So one thing I would like to do as we've done in the past with with other. Special land uses is is make daily garbage cleanup, a a condition on the on the special land use. The other area that that hasn't been all that great, and in fact, we we just had code enforcement out there recently was the. Bumper blocks, don't laugh, Scott. But the the bumper blocks that are on along eleven mile road for at least a good year. Until code enforcement had talked to you guys had been in the sidewalk to varying degrees, got to the point where. Some of them were, you know, at a forty five degree angle into the sidewalk. And I I I know that that's not something that you guys don't notice because I literally see your. Your employees walking around the bump, the bumper ends of cars to get to one side or the other, stepping over the bumper block, stepping over. You know, large pieces of trash and so forth. So a second condition I'd like to put on there is that the bumper blocks, you know, stay aligned on the parking lot. And fixed as they're supposed to be via code. I I don't know. If when they moved them, if they were spiked down, I don't remember, I know I looked, but I don't remember, so. Just want to make sure that that we we put in there that the bumper blocks remain up to code. And then the other thing. And I I don't think you, I don't think this is still an issue and maybe you guys can correct it or not, but when you put in the. The the air check center, there was a very loud bell that that goes off every time the. Car goes, you know, one of those ding ding things to let your staff know that somebody's there that that can actually be heard all the way down on Meadow Brook. And so the other the other condition that I'd like to put on there is is to have that that nuisance noise. Abated so that it's it stays on your property and not all the way across Southfield and one street over, so. So those are, those are three things I'd like to add.
I think in addition to those, I think Eric had raised the issue of obviously the closing off between the walls. Wall to wall connection, that portion that faces south. So I think we can safely say that should be added as well. It's a requirement.
Yeah. And 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 Mark, again, I I walk by that, like I said, four or five times a week. I don't think there's. There's any obstruction, you know, you had mentioned being able to complete the wall. I don't think there's any obstruction there, but obviously they'd have to take a closer look.
And then there's the transition from the taller wall to the shallower wall because the the wall does run along Sunnybrook to contain the end of the parking. At the north that's proposed. So the appearance of the wall, any discussion or concerns in the commission amongst the commission about that?
I don't have any concerns about it.
They had landscaping associated with that. Something we haven't spoken about and 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 I don't know if I I saw it or maybe I just missed it. With regard to the addition itself and the materials that are being used on the addition. Are they intended to match the existing?
Yeah, I believe it's the same is what I reviewed on the on the plans, but we can have the applicant certainly confirm that.
Yes, it is, and it is at the end of the plan set, the very last sheet eight point two. But yeah, it'll have a similar look to the existing building and be the same height as well.
Okay.
Okay, I'm a little late in the game. I know you guys were, you talked landscaping for a second. I know ongoing issue and 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 we've talked to the applicant about this before and and I guess just to. Put it on the record again. The the landscaping beds in the along eleven mile, just to ensure that those. Remain in the rain garden swales that they've that they're intended to be. I know they typically. They've gotten cut down a couple of times and so just to, like I said, put it back on the record. That that's been an issue before.
Other things that I noted from the notes from Goodfus Webster. They're suggesting that a circulation plan be provided, traffic circulation plan. So I'll call attention to that. I think that that's helpful, especially, I know, you know, we've figured out that. Number of parking spaces isn't changing. The the size of the building that's actually used for automotive work isn't changing, so. The company can't take on any more business physically, right, as a result of this, so we don't anticipate increased traffic, but given the. The circulation pattern that was attempted off of the service drive. You know, to route traffic to the back of the building didn't seem to work very well and. Terry said that they're going to be removing those markings when they repave the the parking lot. It will be helpful to have on record. What the bottom, you know, the vehicular circulation pattern is expected to be.
We we spoke a bit about the utilities. In addition to that, I think the utilities and their position is probably one of the. One of the factors that's number one, it's not attractive, especially in a in a sea of pavement, but also. It becomes a hazard amongst moving vehicles through the area. Is part of that utility rework, are are we anticipating that any of that's going to be put underground through there?
We did not anticipate putting it underground, but we were planning to move the guy wire so they're not blocking, you know, six of the parking spaces like they are. We also do have a curb going around that utility pole and some. Some barriers around it too, to make sure that people aren't running into the utility pole if they're backing up.
And if I may, Mark, we have a question for Mr. Bachelor. Asking what will the wall look like along Sunnybrook? Will it come right up to the sidewalk?
It won't come right up to the sidewalk. I believe we have a buffer of three to five feet between the parcel line, the right of way line and the wall. And I can quick check that.
And I'd say the zoning ordinance would dictate what that setback should be.
Yep. Yep. So it's over five feet off of the property line. So I'm over six feet from the side edge of the sidewalk. There will be some landscaping up front too. Along that wall to provide additional screening.
And the wall is a concrete block construction?
Yep, correct.
Is that continuing the, continuing the look and the appearance of the existing wall that is already in place?
Yeah. It, it won't match the existing, you're talking about the one to the south of the residential properties?
I was, yes, because that's the one that I saw in the imagery.
It'll be similar. Our detail is not identical to that, but it is similar. And yes, as we transition from the six foot.
Yeah, I was going to say those look like a stamped or, or, or a formed concrete wall with a brick pattern.
Right. Yep.
And I would say, like I mentioned earlier, we've had that issue before of the space between the residential wall and the screen wall. So I would say I would recommend adding a condition that the applicant maintain that space. It could be. It's, I, it could be, it could be a variety of things, you know? River rock, river rock, ground cover, you know, whatever it is, but just maintain that space between the wall. And then obviously maintain whatever landscaping in that buffer area.
I think that would, along with that, would include keeping trees from sprouting up and causing damage and et cetera.
Yes, yes.
To said walls. So if there are no other questions or concerns to discuss, we want to entertain a motion for recommendation to?
Did we, real quick, before we do a motion, did we talk about the proposed speed bumps?
No.
Good point. We did not talk about the speed bumps.
So I don't think it's a bad idea, but they do need to be in the right of way, in the alley, right? So it does need to be permission from the city to add those speed bumps that needs to come from the city council. Personally, I think it's, you know, it's not the worst idea in the world. Because it'll, you know, when there isn't a lot of traffic there, prevent people from just cutting through that alley quickly and potentially when there are cars parked there being dangerous.
And given it's a vehicular zone and there's more pavement, the, the more open space, the easier it is to zip through. So I could, I could foresee that as being a, you know, a positive way of deterring speed through the area or racing through it. Frankly, I think right now you'd be a little bit crazy to be racing through there, but.
Would Scott Baker with this require an encroachment license then for them to install the bumper blocks? And then I guess.
Speed bumps.
Speed bumps.
Bumper blocks.
A lot. I almost did it again, speed bumps. Also, the other thought occurs to me is I know that this has been access from this alley through to eleven mile has been a concern for the police. So our speed bump is something that we really want to require.
Concern, I'm not, the concern for the police department, I'm not aware of that, but technically it's not, and it, it would be a traffic control device that I think the city could come to an agreement with the applicant. Where the city could either install them and the applicant sharing the cost versus having to do an encroachment license.
Okay.
Really not an improvement. It's more of a, a traffic device, a feature of an alleyway. That, so I think, I think that's something that administratively we could work out with the applicant if it was a, if it was determined by the planning commission that they wanted those in there. And I agree, I think it's a good idea to put them in that particular location.
Okay. And maybe the concern from the police was just the matter of like blocking the alley or having free and clear access to me that more of what that was.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I know there were some concerns. Mr. Wright was concerned about them utilizing the alley for the queuing of the cars at the air check station and not allowing traffic to go two ways. I mean, it is still a public alleyway that two-way traffic needs to be maintained, so.
And the only thing I, I see in the notes that we, I don't think we talked about yet is the, the dumpster location, just noting the setback dimensions on the site. They're noted there. So that would be a thing that should be updated in the site.
Okay, I'm just taking notes, sorry. Okay. If there are no other questions or comments, we'll entertain a recommendation for.
Oh, there's no.
What? Yeah, one last question from Mr. Bachelor. The wall that would be facing Sunnybrook, do you have a wall of this nature in LV that we pick to look at? And I am not thinking of another wall like this. Does anyone else?
Well, didn't we say the one in the south was, was similar?
The one in the south is like a cast concrete, I think, just from what I could see of that image. It looked like a, like a cast concrete with, with a brick kind of form to it. The one that looks to be proposed is a concrete block wall. I'm not certain. I gotta go back and see what the, what the texture or what the, the appearance of that, that block is. If it was like a split-faced or a.
Yeah, it's a twelve-inch split face CMU. With a precast concrete cap on it.
Trying to think here of a split-faced, if we have split-face block on any structures in Lathrop. Split-face block is essentially they manufacture the two blocks in one piece and then they, before they cure, they break them apart. So it gives a more rustic or rusticated finish, kind of like a split stone would be my, I guess, professional description of it. But I suspect they'd be regular in size, which means like an eight by sixteen unit. Is there a discussion or a description of color? I'm going to see it here. I'm just trying to put it all information out on the table and out on this meeting before, for the benefit of those attending. Here we go.
Well, we have two other comments related to that. It's, it's not facing a residential street. Mr. Batchelor asked why it would have to be six, six feet right there. And that's just the, the standard for those screen walls.
The standard for the screen wall between the properties and then at a certain distance offset from the property line that it's abutting to or the street, it, it would reduce to a three foot. I believe that's what's been proposed in the plan.
Facing the sidewalk on Sunnybrook is.
Right. And, but also I think a portion that of faces the adjacent lot, the adjacent residential lot, so his property.
Right.
Yeah, I guess to his question, he says, why does it need to be six feet? I believe, I believe the ordinance says it has to be at least five, no taller than six. Is that right, Scott?
That, yeah, I'm trying to look it up right now. I do believe it's a that's the standards in the ordinance.
Yeah, it's actually in our packet on page sixty-seven.
Okay. Yeah, I've got.
Stonewall made.
Not more, not more than six, yeah, at least five feet high, but not more than six feet.
Right.
The intent being that adequate screening or a, or a basic level of, of, of a certain standard is adhered to. I, I guess I'll ask the question here, is the split face surface on both sides or is it just facing the resident or facing the commercial property? I see what looks, it's hard to tell. The detail looks like a rust, the rough side being shown on what I would assume is the Discount Tire side in their detail. Suppose that would be a non-issue depending on what, if, if the adjacent property, if they have their own fence and their own screening, their own landscaping. I just wanted to get, you know, I guess, ask that question. So that the expectation on what, what's the surface texture that's facing the residential property is understood.
Is that a question for the engineers?
Yes, Joe, can you answer that question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking at the detail too, and it, you're right, it looks like it's only facing one side towards and towards the discount tire. But if that's something that, you know, you have a preference on, we can adjust that as well.
I would say it's, I, I think it's fair to provide a dressed, a more dressed up finish to both sides of the wall.
Okay, I'll make note of that.
And I would say that's, that should be regardless of what the disposition of the adjacent. I mean, there's always a choice for an owner to not put up their own fence or their own screening. And we just as soon have it be equal in appearance to, I guess, what would be perceived as the broader public side.
There's one more comment in the Q and A.
Right. Just again, to reiterate, asking if there's a wall like this in, in the city and to provide a location. And I am struggling to come up with that.
And I'm thinking less of, less of that. And I'm thinking whether I don't know, building, a building that's coming to mind is like the Domino's Pizza, but I don't remember if that's a split face block on, on that one or not. I'm not remembering off the top of my head right now.
You're talking about the facade of that building?
Yes, the facade, not, not, not talking about the wall behind it. Because I know there's a variety of walls, conforming, non-conforming, I mean, some are fences and. It's going to send me out on a walk tonight is what it's going to do.
Are we ready for a motion?
You, you can always tell me what your walk entails and I can get back to Mr. Bachelor with that information.
Yeah, I, I can, I can, I can do that. Or I, I mean, we can even call it up online if imagery of, of masonry and we can do, I mean, on a more basic level, I know that's not in person. And as an architect, we like to see materials in person. So, but, but that's a start. So we have quite a list of, of items, I think, that would, would be conditions. Are we ready to make a motion?
Yeah, I can make a motion, Mark, and somebody might have to help me. I think I've got, I think I've got a fair amount of them, but fill in for me. So I'll make a motion to approve the special land use for Discount Tire with the following conditions, that speed bumps are installed. The connecting wall south of, of the property is, connecting south wall is, is, is connected to the, to the, to the new, new wall on the lot of the property. The wall itself has a dressed appearance on both sides of, of, of the wall. Garbage is, is picked up on both the, the lot and the right of way on a daily basis. The bumper blocks may, are maintained according to code in a line and fixed. And that noise from any type of bowel is, is maintained to the property as limited to the property only. I believe there was a, was there a circulation plan that we wanted on there as well?
Yep, vehicle circulation plan.
Yeah, with the addition of a, a, a vehicle circulation plan. And I think that was the end of the list that I had. What, what did I miss?
There's also provide a standard parking stall dimension and labelly parking that are numbered, the existing and proposed parking spaces in the site plan.
Okay, so that.
And to document the setback dimensions for the dumpster location on the site plan.
Okay. And then also to document the setback dimensions for the dumpster location.
Yep. And then one last thing I can think of adding to that, and that was resolution of the water retention as part of the engineering phase of the work.
Okay. And also adding the resolution of water retention, water retention phase of the work, so.
Second.
Those in favor, roll call.
Roll call, Board River Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Pietrowski.
Yes.
Board Member Thompson. Board Member Fobbs.
Yes.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for that. Just getting my agenda back on the top.
I guess before we go on, that was the, I, that was the motion for the special land use and site plan approval? Did you get them both or was?
Do we have to, do we have to handle those separately, Scott?
You really should. I think Bruce could hit rewind and play it back. I think he addressed both of them, but the site plan approval is, it's an approval with conditions and the special land use is a recommendation of approval with conditions. So they, they really should be carved out as two separate.
But the conditions.
I think, I think I said special land use.
Okay. So yeah, the conditions can be the same, but again, one, the site plan is an approval by this body. And then the, the ultimately the special land use will be, will be before city council.
So, so the record shows, just to clarify, that we have just voted for approval, recommendation for approval for the special land use.
With conditions.
With the conditions identified. Any objections to that understanding amongst the commission before we repeat? Okay, so now we'll, well, I'm seeing, I'm seeing shaking heads, so I think we're good. So we'll move on to the approval or a. So I think we're good. So we'll move on to the um, approval or a um, motion for the uh, site plan approval regard with, with reference to uh, the same um, conditions.
Yeah, so I'll make a motion for a site plan approval for discount tire with the same uh, conditions mentioned for the prior uh, special land use uh, motion.
Second.
Those in favor, roll call.
Roll call, Chair Pietrowski.
Yes.
Board Member Thompson.
Yes.
Board Member Fobbs.
Yes.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
And Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Yeah, thank you. So now we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the public hearing for zoning text amendments. Chapter five, site standards and chapter six, development review. Are those together, Scott, or are they have to be considered individually?
Uh, well, the, those are one, that's one.
One public hearing.
Yeah, one public hearing, one amendment as it was proposed. I don't think it actually made it into the packet this month.
But, the notice?
No, the, the review that Jill had done the last month.
I, all right, no, we didn't include a new memo. We did have the updated language. I mean, it was, the changes were super minor, um, mostly removing um, the, his, her, and replacing it with there to be more gender neutral. And then um, removing references to uh, the billing official and engineer and just inserting that as um, their designate.
Designate, yeah.
Yep.
No, it, it can be addressed as one, it uh,
Okay.
That's how it was noticed, and that's how the, the amendments were prepared, so.
Okay, so we'll open the public hearing.
And again, if anybody has any comments, raise your hand, put a question in the chat, or in the Q and A.
This is what, starting on page sixty-seven of the uh, packet. Correct, yes.
Yes.
So, replacement of language, building official with city administrator designate. It's actually, this was all about changing the language to be a little bit more flexible um, so that there isn't kind of finger pointing, but a more clear direction and a clear path for um, these certain responsibilities. I'm paraphrasing.
That sounds like a good paraphrase. I'm not seeing anyone um, with their hand raised, or any comments?
Okay. We're seeing none, then we will close the public hearing portion of this. And we'll open the discussion, zoning text amendment, chapter five, chapter six. If there's any discussion or anything more to uh, be discussed regarding the contents of the changes, proposed changes.
Like I said, they're uh, fairly minor, I think Bruce uh, mentioned um, Bruce mentioned uh, the one uh, about the maintenance of, of landscaping um, in those instances of uh, fence first of all, that's that beyond the commercial property owners. Um, some of the other changes in the uh, development review really are to align, reduce the number of, of physical plans that people, the applicants need to submit. I think we had something like thirteen in there, which is, I don't want that much paper, don't kill that many trees. So, you know.
We don't, we don't have, we don't have a bureaucracy in the city that big.
No, I, no, I think that's almost more than the number of staff that work there, so.
Well, and it was probably also associated with commission members and if anything that drawings had to be distributed to. But given the electronic format we're operating under, and, and, and I think over the, my tenure here have gotten more comfortable with. And maybe our technology up to speed, we're, 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 yeah, and we're not handling and storing that paper anyway.
Nope, and so that's beautiful thing, so um, I mean, so those are really two of the biggest changes within here. But really, it's like you said, it's just to kind of clean it up, make it a little bit more um, understandable and allow a little bit more flexibility in terms of whose responsibility is.
Right, and I think the one thing at the end of that list was the addition of standards or of approval for establishments involving manufactured sale of alcoholic beverages. And then we've also added in the language for cannabis facilities regulated by the state of Michigan.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, I was just scanning through this myself to see if there are any points of interest that I wanted to um, that go outside the boundaries of the general paraphrasing that was provided in the meeting.
It's a minor one, but there's a, for the site plan review applications and procedures uh, item two on page seventy-one. Replaced some language talking about the city planners fee should be handled such and such a way, and replaces it with a pre-application fee that's established in the city's fee schedule. It's just much easier for applicants to um, just pay the fee that's specified with the schedule.
Yes. And just for the record, we generally waive that, that application fee, but that allows us to have it if we need it, right? There's a complimentary one. Oh.
Okay. So if there's no further discussion regarding that, I think we'll have, make, or accept their a motion for approval of the proposed changes, or recommendation to approve the proposed, proposed changes?
Yeah, it's a recommendation to city council.
So I'll make a motion to uh, approve the proposed changes to um, the zoning text amendments for chapter five, site standards and chapter six development review, as uh, noted in the documents shared with us in this packet.
Second.
Those in favor.
Before you take a roll call, Jason, that's a, the motion is to recommend approval to city council.
Say it wrong, that's what I meant to say.
Yeah, okay, I thought you did.
Motion is to recommend to city council that they approve the language for zoning text amendments to chapter five, site standards and chapter six development review.
Hey, do we need to re-official the second? Was it there, Anna? Okay, those in favor, roll call.
Roll call, Board Member Thompson.
Yes.
Board Member Fobbs.
Yes.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
And Chair Pietrowski.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Okay. Move on to the next item on the agenda, which is establishing a building materials study group.
So, as you, I'm sure all recall, there was quite a robust discussion about building materials at our last meeting. Um, and we gave you some homework to go take a walk and see what you can see about um, about what your neighborhood looks like in terms of alternate materials. And um, well, there were, there were quite a few comments. And um, after discussing a bit with Jill and Mark and Jason, we thought it might be best to have you all set up your own study group to discuss this matter further, since it seemed like it wasn't quite ready for the public hearing that you had originally scheduled for this evening, so. So that's what we'd like to do, is set that, that study group up, no more than three of you, um, to avoid quorum issues, but you know, raise your hand, discuss.
Yeah, I, I want to be on the study group.
I, I, I'm great with being on the study group as well.
All right, so who wants to join them? If anyone, I mean, I guess it could be a committee of two.
Scott's preparing to go.
I, I see him just shoving out of his skin for that.
And Anna just wishes she could stick around, but.
I say we sign Anna and Charo up.
I'd like to give uh, Les Dansbury the opportunity to either agree or not agree to be on the study group, because he's expressed some opinions about uh, this topic in previous committee.
Yes, yeah.
And, and he's not here, so he, he deserves to be assigned to it, that's how it works.
Yeah, I mean.
The best way to make a committee is whoever doesn't show up.
Yeah, I, I can't volunteer for another.
Unless, unless Will, you'd like to, you know, to, I jump forward with both feet at this point, save Les. Sorry to put you on the spot. He's doing all right, he's, he's laying low, so that's good. All right.
Can we add him, can we add some later date?
Can you add um, last of the later date?
Or, yeah.
Or, or.
Add him subject to his approval.
Yeah, we can add him subject to his approval.
You do have a former council member in the audience that perhaps you would be interested.
Oh, you do indeed. Here, you want me to?
There we go.
Maria, would you like to uh, you wanna, you wanna be on our building committee, our building materials committee? Also wisely laying low.
Yes, just like crickets.
And there have been a few uh, residents who are pretty vocal about this topic too. So for extending membership with the study group to beyond members of the planning commission, I think we should consider extending invitations to those residents. Who've spoken up about this in the past as well.
Yeah, maybe, maybe Annette.
Yeah, and that Karen Miller, Robert Roberts.
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, if we establish a study group today with the two of us that have said we definitely want to be on it, and then we can add additional members at a later time. That's what I would like to do.
I'm fine with that.
Any, 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 any words of wisdom that you would like to share on that particular end of things?
For me?
Yeah, you, yeah, you're, you're the only Scott here today.
You never know, sometimes Chief McKee's watching. I don't, I don't think it's a bad idea to start with two, um, maybe reach out to last, find out if he's interested. At least initially keeping it to planning commission members, and then if, if they're, if he's not interested, or if you feel it's appropriate to expand it, then, then perhaps open it up to non-planning commissioners um, to get some input.
I think we'll be, I think we'll be getting input along the way, process wise. Passionate residents, so.
Yeah, I think whether you have them on the study group or not, you're probably going to continue to get the input from those individuals, so.
Now that we've announced that we're on the committee, the, yeah, that, that flow will increase and.
That's okay.
Yep, that's fine.
So last.
I may have to set up a separate email.
So do we have to make a motion about this, or?
You know, I don't know. Scott, event, do they need to make a motion to set up a study group?
Yeah, there should be a motion to establish the subcommittee and appoint members to it.
Already then.
So I'll make a motion to establish a building materials study group for the planning commission uh, and appoint members, Mark Petrowski and myself, Jason Hammond, and uh, reserve the right to potentially add additional members at a later date.
Second.
Those in favor? Roll call.
Roll call, Board Member Fobbs.
Yes.
Board Member Hammond.
Yes.
Board Member Cantor.
Yes.
Chair Pietrowski.
Yes.
And Board Member Thompson. Motion carry. Motion carry.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is old business, tabled items. Don't have any tabled items, we don't have any old business. Um, so let's move on to matters for discussion, and I'll start that with um, couple of things, one is to um, I guess, start off with thanking Anna for her um, contributions and her participation on the planning commission. For, geez, has it been more than three years? Has it been three years for you, Anna? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not good with timeframes anymore.
Over two years.
Little over two years, so I knew it was, I thought it was between two and three, but it wasn't. So not quite the full, but, but we congratulate you on your uh, recent success and in your future plans and goals and new position with the city of Detroit. Planning authority. So uh, we wish you well and um, give you this uh, I kind of, I guess, just this online send-off.
Thank you, Anna.
Yeah, thank you, Anna, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you and good luck, yeah, that's exciting.
Yeah, I'm so excited for you, you're gonna have a lot of fun over there.
Congratulations, Anna.
Though, and I, I'd also be remiss if, if I didn't um, also thank Charo, although she's not here too, and, and, and she's not, not on the list of participants or attendees, at least unless she's checking on me. Uh, for her actual second term of service, because she was with the planning commission before, and we really appreciate her insights and her organization of thoughts and contributions um, to the discussions of the planning commission for, for her, her recent um, years of service as well, and we'll miss her as well, so.
Charo.
She might be back though, I mean, she comes and goes, right?
Precedent hasn't.
When this, when this looks like the better option? Let's, let's see, uh, so with Anna's departure, we are going to be devoid of uh, someone filling the role as the secretary for the planning commission. Is this something we, we can hold off until the next meeting at this point?
That's my plan for you guys.
Okay.
I guess I can say guys, because now this is Anna's last meeting, so we only have guys right now, um.
Gotta fix that.
Wait, don't worry, we are, we're gonna get, we have um, we have two new uh, uh, planning commissioners that were appointed last night. And uh, they will be joining us for their first meetings next month, and I'll be making follow, or hello calls to them uh, this week. So um, I figure on your agenda for next month will be election of a new secretary.
Or, or we can just make a motion to, to elect last, since he's not here.
I can just imagine his reaction to that. So, we'll save that for, we'll save that for June, we'll save that for June, so.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so any other uh, matters for discussion amongst the commission that they would like to bring forward at this time? Seeing shaking heads, uh, okay, we'll move on to general communications, Giffords Webster newsletter?
Oh, yeah, and I, I hope the link works. I tried to, I tried to get fancy with it, since it was an online thing, and it didn't want to work for me sometimes.
It worked.
Yes. Excellent.
Not working in one format for me, but let me try another one.
Hey, um, and so, well, and I don't want to miss Scott. Scott, do you have anything for us? I mean, no harmonica concert.
Yeah, last night I was willing to offer a concert, but tonight I got nothing, so.
Dang it, dang it, well, I have something for you all, if you're ready.
Put my daughter on the spot and have her play the piano behind me.
Oh, you, you could, you could.
I think that would make her, yeah, just crazy nervous, be, to be thrust into that, so.
Um, well, I just have a couple of DDA related things. One, we uh, we got our flowers for hanging baskets today, and um, Cory and I have begun. One, we, we got our flowers for hanging baskets today, and Cory and I have begun planting a little bit, but we will have, I mean, we bought three hundred and sixty flowers, so we're probably gonna buy on another fifty, so we're having a planting party this Saturday.
Frost is gone, right? Is this a sign that the frost is done?
Darn well better be gone. It darn well better be, otherwise that would be, I mean, it's gonna be like ninety on Saturday, so which is the perfect day for a planting party. Anyways, planting party, municipal park from ten to one, if you would like to help us plant the rest of those hanging flower baskets and the planters that are up front. And then we are also having our annual quarter work cleanup on Saturday, June twelfth, from nine to eleven. The, it's been, we've got, we're promoting it on social media or e-newsletter and the city's website, so I can send you all the link if you'd like to sign up.
Are you, are you working on the, on the service drive again? More tree branches down.
We are taking recommendations for areas that need a little extra TLC, and we will be assigning people areas. So maybe, maybe. I certainly plowed through a bunch of the wood that we use, that we chop down for fireside Fridays, which I did not see any of you add, just. But that's all right, you can show up for picnics in the park on Fridays from eleven to one. Also, we are having our first ever Juneteenth event on Saturday, June nineteenth, from four to eight P M. This overlaps lately with the art fair that is happening earlier in the day, but we will have panelists, we will have, well, panel discussion, I should say, we have our diversity champions for business, community group, and then resident, twenty-one younger and twenty-one and over. So nomination forms are again, online, social media, and then we have them out in our on the table in lobby of city hall. And I guess I should have, I went chronologically, but this is way out of order. We're having a cannabis open house next Wednesday, May twenty-sixth, from four to six P M. in the community room, so this is in direct response to some of those comments that we got about not having a, an in-person option for public involvement, so we're gonna have an open house. Jill and Eric and I are working on posters that we can have on display, a rolling PowerPoint in the background, and this will give residents an opportunity to have face-to-face conversations with us about what's being proposed, so this is in addition to, I might add, the official public hearing that is happening on the fifteenth, so. And then all of this information will obviously, it'll all be put online for access afterwards, and then we'll leave the posters and whatnot up in sort of an exhibit hall format for residents to come and peruse afterwards if they're more comfortable doing a solo kind of trip, and we'll also, lastly, be having comic cards, so if there are residents that are not, I don't know, not tech savvy, don't want to do it online, they can give us their questions, comments, feedback, and a good old fashioned comic card, and we'll collect those and compile that all into. I think it was for you.
Check to see whether that was in the city newsletter yet, or.
It is in the city, it is in the e-newsletter.
E-newsletter, okay, great.
We missed the publication deadline for, for your town. Your town's not gonna get published until after, so.
That's okay, I think, at least I'd hope the newsletter is, is, people are, you know, paying attention to it, but I think that's, that's an important one and an important topic that people want to know about and participate in.
It is gonna, we, it is mentioned in your town as a, hey, this, this happened, and you make, you can find all this information on the city's website, et cetera, et cetera, so there's still something in there, so.
Okay. Right.
I think that's it. I think that's everything, at least for now.
Okay. Thank you, Suzie. So with that, last item, adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to thumbs up.
Have a good night, everybody.